I'd like to call this meeting of the Mayor and City Council, November 4th, 2019, to order. If you would please rise, pledge allegiance by me, and then remain rising for invocation by Mr. Jim Trippit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you. Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings that you've given us. We thank you for your blessings. Lord, on this community, we come before you tonight, Lord, and humbly ask you to continue, Lord, your provision, your protection, your guidance and direction on our town, our city, our community. Father, we lift up this Mayor and City Council. God, as they deliberate the business of the city, God, we ask you to grant them wisdom, guidance, and direction, and, Lord, that everything is said and done and tonight's meeting would be acceptable and pleasing in your sight. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
We have quite a few dignitaries with us here tonight, so I'd like to point out a few of y'all, if y'all don't mind, and if you please rise when I call your name, that would be great. Carroll County Chairman, Michelle Morgan. Carrollton Superintendent Schools, Mark Albertis. Carrollton School Board Member-at-Large, David Godwin. David, here, there he is. Carrollton School Board Member-at-Large, Melanie McClendon. Did she make it today? On her way. Carrollton School Board Member, Ward 1, Greg Dothert. Carrollton School Board Member, Ward 2, Katie Williams. Carrollton School Board Member, Ward 3, Dr. Jason Mount. Carrollton School Board Member, Ward 4, Dr. Jimmy Pope. And Carrollton School Board Candidate and seem-to-be School Board Elect, Ward 4, Greg Schillingburg. Greg here. Thank you very much for accommodating me on that just a minute. Now we're getting down to item number four, says Citizens Comments. Anyone has anything to bring before the council, if you'll please come to the front, state your name, your address, and please try to limit to three minutes, please.
I live at 130 North Gallow Street, and I just want to thank you all for responding to my street need. I feel free to walk outside and walk to the corner now for my exercise. You put not only one sign up, slow children, you put up two, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing nobody wanting to come ahead, we'll move ahead. Item number five, minutes. I assume that y'all had a chance to read.
I have, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 7, 2019.
Have a motion, or have a second? Have a second. All in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand, rather. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mayor and Council announcements.
Mr. Mayor, just have a quick, sort of an announcement. I want to thank all my neighbors in the City School Board for coming tonight. I do want to point out that, that on item number four, Resolution 18-2019 Citizen Donation Policy, I want to personally thank Dr. Charles Hubbard. He was instrumental and a driving force behind this policy. I expect that we're going to vote it, vote for it, so it's going to help with residents and citizens of Carrollton who want to give gifts to the city and especially the train depot. So, thank you, Dr. Hubbard, for coming. We appreciate your help with this policy.
I'd just like to remind everybody that there's an election tomorrow, and it starts at 7:00 and closes at 7:00, so do your civic duties and go out and cast your vote. Tim, you got anything?
Just an update on a project for Councilman Byrd. The NSP Housing that's being built with federal funds is due to break ground this week. There are surveyors out there today, and you're probably going to see some digging on that lot either tomorrow or the next day. So, be excited to see those houses come up. And also, we met with the supplier for the playground at Bristol Lakes, and they said the product will be ready to install in February of next year. And that may seem like a little bit far out, but it's really not. When you look at the building season, and this is a brand-new product that they're designing, and so, you know, we're also excited about seeing that take place. I know the people out there will enjoy that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to take Carrollton first and I miss this church, so let me tell you thank you for everything you've done. The storm water, fixing that, looks great.
Brings down to item number eight, Approval Agenda Items for Consideration.
Make a motion when you approve the agenda items.
Motion, second. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Met, Proclamation. Dr. James Pope Day.
Well, thank you again for everybody coming. Dr. Pope, I just call you Jimmy, I'm going to have to call you Jimmy, I'm sorry. He's my neighbor, and to tonight, we're going to recognize him and give him the key to the city. I get kind of emotional, excuse me. Jimmy, I've only been working on this since July, believe it or not, and having to work around your schedule to get you here. You've been hunting a lot, but what we're going to do is, we're going to bring you up, we're going to read a proclamation, give you a key to the city tonight, but then we're going to name November 15th as the Dr. James Pope Day for the entire city of Carrollton and present you a key to the city at halftime. So, I just wanted to tell you that. Dr. Pope was first elected in 1983, and he's been the longest-serving School Board Member in the history of Carrollton. And I just went back to 1983 and found this is what was going on in 1983 when Dr. Pope was first elected. The Dow Jones year-end was 1,258 points, interest rates for 11%. The average cost of a new house is $82,600. The average income in the United States was $41,000. A Dodge Ram truck costs $5,665. A gallon of milk, or two, a gallon of milk costs a dollar thirty-five. Men's leather shoes was $39. China's population just reached a $1 billion, I mean, 1 billion people. You might remember there was a terrorist attack by suicide bomber in the US Embassy in Beirut that killed 63 Marines. The US invaded Grenada. NASA launched its first warman, its first African-American to outer space. President Ronald Reagan proposed Strategic Defense Initiative, SDI, Star Wars. The first mobile phone was introduced to the public by Motorola Company. Star Wars: Return of the Jedi was released in 1983. The rock band released their song, you might remember, Every Breath You Take. Lionel Richard released All Night Long. Michael Jackson released Beat It! and Billie Jean. Nintendo released the game Mario Brothers, which featured Mario and his brother Luigi. This one I found really interesting, 1983. ARPANET, A-R-P-A-N-E-T, net officially changed its use to the Internet Protocol, meaning the Internet, 1983. Microsoft Word is first released. Swatch introduced their first watches. Carrollton had a population of 14,500. Carrollton was featured in a 1983 TV movie called Murder in Calheda County, although the Carrollton scenes were actually not filmed in Carrollton, they were filmed in Newton. Carrollton High School had less than 1,000 students. Carrollton only had two McDonald's. But the most important thing that happened in 1983 is that Dr. Pope was elected. I know Mark Albertis and I are pretty close friends, and we always talk about what makes Carrollton great. And it is, one part of that is the Carrollton school system. The City Council and the Mayor, we only get to hire three people, the Mayor, the City Attorney, the City Clerk. And I think our city's run very well, and it's been pleasurable, this election cycle, the other debates, and see all the candidates. No one is talking bad about Carrollton. One thing the Carrollton School Board does is elect the superintendent. And what, yeah, it's what makes our school system great, of course, are the parents' involvement, the teachers, the vice principals, the principals, the administrators, and the superintendent. But it does start at the top. You've got to have good elected officials on school board. And I do believe that Carrollton is a great school system, and I do believe because, one reason of that is because of Jimmy Pope. So, for me personally, Jimmy, thank you, and I read your proclamation. And then what we're going to do, we're going to bring you up, Jimmy, you're going to take a photograph with the Mayor, the Council, and then I'm going to invite the School Board and all our neighbors to come out for a big group picture. Whereas, whereas Dr. James Pope, M.D., dedicated 36 years to his duties as a surgical specialist with Carrollton Surgical Group, and has held at leadership roles in numerous boards, foundations, and professional associations, including serving as President of the Georgia Surgical Society, Chief of Staff, Secretary and Treasurer, and the Surgery Department Chairman of Tanner Medical Center, and was a founding member of the American Society of Breast Surgery. And whereas Dr. Pope, a member of the 1961 Carrollton High School State Championship Football Team, and 1962 Carrollton High School State Championship Baseball Team, was a Carrollton High School Honore graduate and was inducted into the Trojan Athletic Hall of Fame in 1998. And whereas Dr. Pope faithfully served his country, the United States Army, while stationed in Germany from 1974 through 1977. And whereas Dr. Pope has served on the West Georgia College Foundation Board of Directors, as President of the Georgia School Board Association, on the Carrollton High School Booster Club Board, is the longest-tended member of the Carrollton Board of Education, having diligently served in this capacity since 1983. And whereas Dr. Pope has been a powerful positive force in the health, education, and growth of Carrollton, and his life of dedication to his profession has helped establish West Georgia as a highly regarded regional medical center. And whereas Dr. Pope has demonstrated the highest skills and professional achievements, and has earned the admiration and respect of his colleagues, patients, and this community. And whereas we, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Carrollton, welcome the opportunity to recognize the dedication and contributions made by Dr. James Pope, D.C. Allen, and proclaim November 15th, 2019, to be Dr. James Pope Day. And Carrollton, Georgia, present him with a key to the city conveying our admiration, sincere gratitude. Walt Hallworth, Mayor.
I suspect the rest of this is going to be kind of boring, if anybody'd like to go on home, it's just, um... This is down to item number two, Resolution 16-219. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read this resolution, please. Whereas from time to time, the Georgia General Assembly has seen fit to honor various community members of historical significance by naming portions of state highways in their honor. And whereas Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I was born in 1882 in Ridgeway, South Carolina, and relocated to Carrollton, Georgia in 1918 after completing his postgraduate work at St. Andrews Hospital in Tuskegee, Alabama. Whereas Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I was the first African-American physician at Tanner Memorial Hospital in 1918 until his passing in 1954. And whereas Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I served as a member in excellent standing of the American Medical Association, the Medical Association of Georgia, the Atlanta Medical Association, the Carol Douglas Harrelson Medical Society, and whereas Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I was honored by the Carrollton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners by naming West Carrollton Housing Development Thomas Homes in 1962. Whereas Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I was a revered leader in the community and active member of his church, Mount Zion Baptist Church, where he served as a deacon and treasurer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of Carrollton offer their unanimous support to the Georgia General Assembly in honorarily naming the intersection of Alabama Street and US Highway 27 after Dr. Samuel D. Thomas I adopted this fourth day of November, 2019. And I know he has family here.
The Mayor, City Council, community of Carrollton, we are so grateful. I cannot tell you how honored I am and my family to be a part of this community. Every day, when I am here actively involved, my friend Jillian, Tanner, and a host of other people that I work with, we are so grateful. I'm just lost for words and very, very honored. Thank you very much.
Okay, we do need to vote on this now, so to have a motion, we approve. Resolution 16-219. Motion, second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number three, Resolution 17-219, Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant Application. Erica, oh, there you are.
We are in the process of applying for Georgia Conserves money that the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Act of 2018 established. This particular act basically dedicates 40% of existing sales and use taxes on outdoor sporting goods to fund stewardship projects and green space acquisition projects. We are currently seeking funding to purchase approximately 180 acres adjacent to Hobbs Farm Park. I think, Haley, do you want to put that on the... And as part of that application, we have to provide a resolution from this body in support of the application. Just a few things to note about this particular application. One thing is, we are seeking... One thing is, we are seeking private donations for the match, so the city of Carrollton would not be required to provide any funding should we be awarded this grant. The acquisition will be the only thing that we are requesting, maybe a small trailhead, it depends on what the appraisal for the property comes back at. Once we get approval for this first round of applications, it's a process that'll probably take about six to eight months to do the second round. They have to invite you back, so it's not something that will happen very quickly. But we are looking to basically, approximately double the size of Hobbs Farm Park. One thing to note is, there's about 4,000 feet of riverfrontage on this piece of property, so it does further protect our river corridor, which is just upstream from our water intake. If you have any questions, I'm available.
I just have a quick question for the mayor. Mayor, is this property, all I hear about with this election cycles, we don't have enough room to build more housing. Is this a good piece of property? Is it wetlands, or is it, could it be developed for housing?
I think most of it's wetlands, isn't it, Erica?
There's a good bit of, I don't know about wetlands, but there's a good bit of floodplain along the river, so it's certainly suitable for green space. Near the north side drive portion, so in other words, on the north side of the property, there are some higher lands that could be used for development. But towards the river and then back towards Hobbs, it's pretty wet.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, this is the first step in this process, and you, gentlemen, will get another bite at the apple, as we like to say. If you examine this property and decide this is not the use you want for it, you don't have to go forward, but we do have to send the resolution in just to make the application. So again, you'll have time, you'll have months, and we can include this in a work session to be, or it's used to be discussed, but we do, to make application, we have to do the resolution now.
Erica, can you kind of point out, I'm a little bit confused, I mean, Hobbs Park?
So if you, right there. That's exactly right. So that right there is part of Hobbs Farm Park. That's kind of an oxbow in the Little Talahtusa River. If you look at the, it's kind of snakey looking, that's actually an oxbow off of the river. And everything north of that, like I said, it's, you know, being used is mostly green space. There were some, it was, a piece of it was timbered a while, a while back, but it's kind of thrown back in now. And this is an assemblage piece, I mean, it's, I think, five tracks. It's a big piece of property.
I'm seeing Georgia Highway 166 up at the very top, is that...
That's the bypass, that's north side drive.
Okay, bypass. So all we're doing here tonight is giving you the green light to go ahead.
Well, to go ahead and actually, you know, complete the application. It's, DNR basically has kind of a two-step process with their grants, so this is kind of the pre-application. If they are interested in pursuing it with us, then we will do a second round of applications. This is the first time this money has been offered, and so I'm not real sure of their process, if it's going to take three months, four months. I don't even know that they're going to even begin reviewing it until the end of the year. So it could be sometime next year before we actually get to be invited back to apply for the second round, and then it could take a few months after that before we find out if we were awarded the funding.
Erica, that is Stewart Street that is on the southeast, running basically the southeastern border of the property, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So the blue line is actually the river?
Yes.
So it is a lot of floodplain and wetlands, that, isn't it?
It is. I mean, I just can't tell you the exact number on the wetlands because we'd have to do a study, but there is a good bit of floodplain based off of the token.
Anybody got any questions for Erica?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 17-219, 2019.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor of Resolution 17-219, Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant Application, please raise your hand. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number four, Resolution 18-219, Citizens Donation Policy.
This next item on the agenda, Councilmember Lane touched on earlier, and thanked Dr. Hubbard for his work in putting this together. This particular donation policy is one that you reviewed back in a work session, it's been probably about, probably about six months ago. We did make some changes, a few things, a few items. We will be establishing a donations committee within, with our city manager and then two employees to review all gifts and donations that are made to the city, to make sure that, a couple things, we won't accept any on loan, any donated items are our property going forward. Also, donors must provide documentation of their title. The city won't accept a gift if it's in need of extensive restoration or conservation, and the city won't accept a gift that has restrictions on use. One thing to note, and Councilmember Lane touched on this, we did add a provision in there about the Bradley Street Train Depot and gifts that are made to the depot, that the, basically the donations committee placed priority on gifts that are directly linked to the depot, historical items that are directly linked to the depot, when they're considering how they will be displayed. After the adoption of this, anybody that is wishing to reclaim any gift they have previously donated would have 60 days to reclaim it if they don't want to adhere to these provisions in the policy.
Erica, I just want to confirm that in my packet was the original resolution on the gift policy given to us at the work session, that I believe y'all emailed the revised with the Bradley Street. Okay, that's the one we're going to be voting on.
That is the one you're going to be voting on tonight, is the revised one to include the donated items to the Bradley Street Train Depot policy.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 18-2019.
Have a motion, do I get a second? Have a second. All in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move into the German.